Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting tonight, Thursday, April 6th, 2023. I call our meeting to order and I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And hearing none from anyone else, I would say that we have none. Our next section is our public comment section. This section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name will be recognized and we will go from there. Do we have?
First up is Kevin Tullamary.
Okay. Go ahead, Sechs.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to members of the Board of Selectmen. I have an important comment that I'd like to share tonight. And I know there has been some controversy over the historical information I have presented to the Board of Selectmen, which is also presented to the Public Building Committee and the Historic Properties Commission. You can see the information in the Board of Selectmen agenda of February 2nd, 2023. I also see that Mr. Liverant of Nathan Liverant and Son has submitted a letter to the board, unsolicited, I may add. But hopefully, that letter and the following comment will add some clarity to the situation and the information I presented. On March 23rd, I received an email from Dr. John Demos, the Samuel Knight Professor Emeritus History at Yale University. He's one of the leading historians in our country, as a matter of fact. And I gave him a copy of the information and met with him in Hebron on the Wednesday before that, March 22nd. And his note to me of the Thursday, March 23rd was, "Hello, Kevin. What a fascinating morning-afternoon you gave us yesterday. I've looked through the material you gave me and I'm hugely impressed. It's a completely professional and persuasive case you make. I can't see how anyone could refute it. There are so many different parts: geology, environment, indigenous people, colonists, enslavement, even the present. It could well be a history park, an outdoor museum. Has anyone suggested that? That Peters landscape has a real aura about it. I felt I was in the presence of ghosts. And your effort to preserve it is so very admirable. Please keep me informed whatever happens next. Best wishes, Dr. John Demos." So here is one of the leading professors of history in our country suggesting the possibility that the Horton property, the Governor Peters Farm, could well be a history park and outdoor museum. I think this is a really groundbreaking statement and I think it's something that I would like the Board of Selectmen and the people of Hebron to strongly consider. Dr. Demos is not the only professor in my original material that was submitted last February. Professor Robert Thorson of the University of Connecticut also identifies and acknowledges the important and distinct qualities of the Horton property, Peters Farm. So I urge the Board of Selectmen to follow these suggestions and abandon the current plans for the Horton property. I'd suggest that we continue and focus our efforts on fixing up-
Your time is up, Mr. Tullamary. Wrap up, please.
Thank you. That we fix up the current public works facility at Old Colchester Road. We have an amazing opportunity to create something special. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
So next up is Greg. Greg, please state your full name and address. And we'll move on to Robert Blackmore.
Hi, my name's- Are you looking for Robert Blackmore right now?
Yes, sir.
My name's Robert Blackmore. I live at 5 Rondelay Road, Amston, Connecticut. Curious, is the board gonna provide cost for renovating the facility at Old Colchester Road as well as the facility at Kenny Road? And my other part of my question is, has the Army Corps of Engineers been included with the project at Kenny Road? And I will mute now. Thank you.
Okay. Those questions, I will have the town staff. If you want to leave a phone number or contact information, we'll get back to you with that.
I'll send it along. I'd rather not have it listed on-
No, that's fine. No, I understand. I was just saying, you know, we try not to create a lot of back and forth at the meetings. So, you know, you will get your answers on those. But contact information, so-
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's try one more time. Greg, do you have a public comment?
I think Ms. Rhodes has asked for a comment. Oh, okay. Is Donna?
Greg's mic is not working.
Correct. Is there Ms. Rhodes that wanted to comment, I believe?
I don't see that here in our chat.
Okay, because it popped up on the screen and then it went off. Oh, okay. Okay. If no other public comment, moving along, number five, our good-to-know special recognition, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to announce and introduce. I hope they're here. I haven't checked who's on here. But the spotlight is the Hebron Green Committee. They want to give you a quick update. Now that it's spring, they got some things going on. Swap Shack report, six-month assessment. And hopefully, we can turn over to the representatives of the Hebron Green Committee.
Hi, Chairman Larson and Andy. You know, we're always here. Some are lurking on these cameras. The Board of Selectmen. We just wanted to touch base quickly as the Green Committee. You know, I think several of you were on board when we were talking about launching the Swap Shack. And, you know, when we finally got it up and running last year, one of the stipulations was that in six months, we'd like to just really kind of do a touch base and see how the first six months went, you know, what we'd like to change, you know, where to go from here. And so that was really what this report was intended to do. So that is April through October, and then it took us a little bit of time to write it and then get it over to you guys. And so that was really what this report was supposed to do. It's just supposed to kind of inform the board of some of the things that go on day-to-day, you know, things that we saw as wins, things that we saw we might want to tweak a little bit. But overall, the committee was just really blown away by the reception from community, from the town. It really was, we feel, a success and a really great addition down the transfer station. You know, as we know, space is tight down there. So asking for, you know, space for a swap shack was, you know, it was an undertaking. And we are really happy with the results. And we wanted to also mention that we will be opening the Swap Shack again as part of our Earth Day celebration. So Saturday, the 22nd, is going to be our usual birthday cleanup celebration and planting of the pollinator garden. And then the next day, Sunday, the 23rd, the Swap Shack will open for its normal business hours, which is every Sunday, 10 to 2. You know, when we had first started, one of the things that we saw as an opportunity to develop, when we first started, we were intending for this to be open not only year-round, but self-sustaining and hopefully being, you know, attendant-less. And one, we started getting a little bit, you know, once we got a little closer to wintertime, we started getting a little cautious of what snow and ice removal might look like for volunteers sitting down there. You know, we of course want to keep members and employees of the transfer station safe. So one of the things that we wanted to improve on was closing for the winter. And then the other thing that we wanted to, you know, that we want to continue with is having an attendant there. So, you know, we've been talking a little bit with Kevin Kelly and Andy about, you know, could that be a volunteer? Could that be, you know, us opening and closing, you know, and that sort of thing? So those really were the only two large modifications. But overall, we're really pleased with how it went. I hope you guys had a chance to read this report. There's some really fun stuff that got swapped around in the shack. But we will be opening part of our Earth Day celebrations on April 23rd. So we hope to see everyone down there and we're really excited to be back in the community and swapping again.
Great. I've actually stopped in virtually every time I go down, which is, you know, if not every weekend, every other. One of my suggestions, you've got some incredibly good stuff down there. I don't know if it would be a possibility if the paper would do it, you know, like a weekly update of the, you know, quote-unquote, "special items" that may have gotten dropped off, because it's really amazing, some of the high-quality things that get left there. You know, and a lot of people, I've talked to people, I've tried to outfit, you know, you know, an uncle's home or a brother's home, or it's like, have you gone down? They're like, "No, where is it?" You know, it's like, yeah, just go down where they drop off, brush it off, it's right there.
Yeah.
And that guy says, "Wow, I got a whole stuff in the kitchen for the guy."
It's kind of amazing. So first, I want to address that idea. And that is actually something that you had mentioned while you were down there, I think, once before. And the committee loves it. We just have not been able to get or act together to do that. We're already doing Facebook and we get actually a lot of turnover on Facebook. But hopefully, this year, we'll be able to start introducing some other forms of communication, because I do think that we are missing a bit of a segment of the population by potentially not having stuff in the River East and reminding people. You know, we have to make sure that we are telling people that we're still here. We're still open Sundays, 10 to 2, because we see a lot more stuff coming in and wanting to come in than is getting taken out. So it's, you know, it's definitely a delicate balance. But the second part of that is, you know, I don't know if you read the report, but like people are furnishing their first apartments, their kids' college dorms, you know, stuff like that with things from the Swap Shack. We've had some really amazing things come through and I think that's part of the reason why we have not had a problem. Having an attendant there is because our committee members typically, we've got a couple of them on the call right now, John and Mike are on. We fight each other for the weekends usually, so that whoever's down there gets first dibs on the stuff. And I mean, you see some really cool things down there. So that's actually a great observation and it's also a great idea. And eventually, Dan, we're gonna get on that.
Perfect. Great. Anybody else? Thank you. Fantastic. As I say, it's great to see it open again. You know, it's just neat to kind of go through it and peruse. It's almost like a, you know, like a little antique shop.
It is, yes. Please stop by, April 23rd, 10 to 2. We hope to see everyone there.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So next up on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. So it's no surprise that we've been working on the budget. And we had a meeting Tuesday night with the Board of Finance. And they reduced, or looking to reduce, before it goes to the public hearing, the Hebron Board of Events bottom line by a million dollars, which would that be a reduction of 1.23 mils of the 34.09 mils from the original 35.32 mils. So the 34.09 mils is still a 2.39 mil increase over the existing 31.70. So that's where we are before we go to the public hearing. I just want everybody to know that. As far as the Town Manager's Report, we're working with two FOI requests. It's taken up a lot of time and a lot of staff, including IT. But, you know, we have to do that and we're diligently working on that every day to compile the information that's requested. Requests are very broad, so it's taking some time. We're starting union negotiations with the Supervisors Union and the Town Attorney that started this week. We're meeting with, I met with the Historic Properties in the old town hall and had some discussions about ARPA funds. And they're looking to possibly have a survey done on their building like we are doing on our town buildings in assessment. So I told them we could possibly include that. So we'll work together to see if we can do that. We're in the midst of hiring summer seasonal help for the Parks and Rec. As you can see, the weather's changing. They're getting very busy. So we have some pretty good applications. We're very proud and happy to see that. And we've started to receive letters of retirement, which I don't think is a secret. Randy Blaze, who's our Fire Marshal slash Building Official, gonna be tough shoes to fill. Kevin Kelly, who's our Public Works Director, along with our WPCA Administrator. And then Karen Bowen, who is the Assistant to the Public Works Director in the Parks, I'm sorry, in the DPW Department. Okay, and then I'm working with the Town Planner. And I know Father Ron, I think Father Ron's on here. He wants to get on the agenda. We weren't ready for this agenda. We're already well-established moving forward. But in talking with the Town Planner, he's got the information he needed from St. Peters and Father Ron. So I think this is something that we can, we'll bring it to the next meeting and actually agree to apply for it and the town can support it. So we're working with them as best we can. And that's all I had on that. I don't know if there's any questions.
Anybody? Okay. Beautiful. Okay. Then our next thing would be our old business. We have our American Rescue Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to jump in, let me know.
If you would, please.
Okay, so attached is an updated ARPA status report. The Town Manager recommends the Board of Selectmen hold a special meeting/ workshop specifically to review ARPA projects. Suggest the date for this, with all the other meetings we have, would be April 17th at 7:00 PM. And just to add lib, we're filing with OPM the projects that have been approved and Elaine is cataloging those or trying to submit. They got a lot of criteria in the dropdown that you have to, you know, fill out and it's not, it's not as open or as easy as you think. So we need to make some decisions pretty quickly. We've got another year to go on selecting the projects and starting to finish them up. So we really should, I don't think we should bog down a Board of Selectmen's meeting. I think we should designate a workshop. That's just my opinion. It's up to the board, of course. But I think we're a year into it already. We got one more year to go. I think we really need to sit down and look at the projects that we're considering maybe revisiting, maybe reducing with new information that we have and then moving forward. Because now we're starting to file with OPM and once you do that, those projects are gonna be locked in and I don't think we'll have much leeway. So it's up to you guys.
It definitely is something that really needs to be done on a non-Board of Selectmen night, just because of the time. I mean, the couple of nights that we did try to even just hit a few of the items ran us well past 9 o'clock, you know, pushing the 10 o'clock hour. I'll open it up for comments from my fellow members. Anybody? Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I shut my camera off instead of unmuting myself. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the workshop. You know, we're kind of beyond the meat of our meetings with the budget, you know. And I think that, given we have some choices to make, right, and funding running out, I wouldn't be opposed to a workshop on this. Thank you.
Okay. Would that Monday, the 17th, work for you? Tiffany?
That works for me, if it works for everybody else.
Okay, Pete?
I think it's a great idea. As hard as it is, I'm actually gonna be away on the 17th. I've been home like 99% of the time. And I'm away on the 17th, not until 10:00, and I have a lot that I want to talk about on this list and the changes and the thoughts and the strategic perspective on this, as we talked about last meeting. So I would very much like to attend. I cannot attend on the 17th. I will be in the air flying home at that time.
Okay. I'm looking.
Hey, Dan.
Yes, Mark.
Aren't we doing it Zoom, so Peter can attend and I can attend?
If he's flying, no. I don't know if you can do-
I'm in an airplane.
Oh, you're in an airplane.
Yeah, my flight's at that time, so I will be unavailable. Or I'll only be able to do it for a little bit, then I have to sign off. So it's just not a good day for me.
Yeah, if Peter can't do it that day, I think we should reschedule it.
That's fine. I mean, I'm just, we're just trying to grab a day. What, do Wednesdays work for anybody? I mean, for whatever reason, seems like Wednesdays are usually a pretty off day. But, you know, could we maybe, and again, I don't know what the town staff's got going, but, you know, I'm looking at possibly-
Just shoot us, we tried to pick a date that seemed to be open with the town calendar. But if you guys shoot us some dates, or we can do a, we can set up a Google poll and whatever works, we can do that as well. So we're not, we just wanted to make a suggestion and apparently if that doesn't work for someone, then we're willing to regroup.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see what we can piece together. If you can just forward into Andy, Donna, you know, days that might work. And we'll see if anybody's got the same date that works. You know, possibly even Wednesday evening. I may have to do it by-
Why don't you ask by now? Is the 19th, does that work for everybody? Is that, why don't we ask right now? I mean, if it's the one date, is that a problem?
I honestly prefer to get through Earth Day. I'm pretty busy at my agency right now, so.
Oh, Earth Day's the 19th.
No, what is Earth Day?
Earth Day is the 22nd, but it's also the deadline for tax collection, so I'm pretty busy at work.
Well, shoot for the 24th? That's a Monday?
Would do that. Yep.
We'll check the town calendar and we'll shoot out an email to the Board of Selectmen, see what works for everybody. I think trying to do this is like nailing jello to a tree in a meeting.
You're gonna use a big staple. Okay. Okay, let's see what we can piece together. Our next item would be the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee. Wow.
Yeah, we tried to piece this together, but it was too many words.
Selectmen, Selectmen Castor.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And I see Terry's on the line too, and I appreciate in the past allowing me, if anyone else on the committee wants to speak, so Terry, I'll provide a quick update. If there's anything you want to add, please feel free to do so. So where we are, we're getting close. We've got a couple of iterations. Be now the third iteration of the survey, so it's moving along very nicely. It's basically, we're gonna be a little bit behind the original targeted dates. I think we should have the final documents to bring to the Board of Selectmen for the next meeting. So if we can add that, you know, for the next meeting, we'll have the details for you guys to review by that time. And just a quick summary, I think a good job's been done developing a project summary document with embedded links to try to give the public an opportunity at the time of the survey to get a perspective on the historical, you know, the background of it. And some, the gentleman asked earlier tonight, some sort of cost, broad estimates. I mean, we're not, we don't have an exact cost, but just sort of they can get an idea of sort of the projections, next steps. There's some links to the Horton property purchase, the town meeting associated with that, town center plan. So people can understand it within the perspective of the intent and an opportunity to remind people that the land was purchased for this project on Horton and making sure they understand sort of that background. So if we don't move forward, they are, the public decides not to move forward in that direction and that's supported. Obviously, that property, as an example, would still be subject for development in terms of within the structure of what the town had, voters had approved earlier. So some opportunities to provide that perspective. The survey will, it's gotta be pretty brief. It's gotta be less than 10 minutes. So we're really driving at probably three ultimate choices and some other context there, which again, we'll share at the next meeting. But I think we're in a, and I'll just, we have one more meeting probably to wrap up that and then we'll bring it to, plan on bringing it to the Board of Selectmen for review. So a little bit behind, but I think we're making really good progress. Terry, do you want to add anything?
That covers it, Peter, and we are making good progress and hashing things out has helped us, pointed us in the right direction. I think we're gonna like what we are gonna produce and I think it'll give us some good feedback. That's about it, Pete.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's questions?
No, I mean, I think we're kind of waiting to hear what you bring forward.
Yep, we're getting close. Next meeting.
Okay. Andy? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Thank you. Why am I getting in trouble for not being on mute? Text 8B. Is the Budget Communications attached is a copy of the Budget Transmittal and Summary of the Board of Selectmen's Recommended Budget Submitted Submitted to the Board of Finance of March 28, 2023. Is appropriate at this time for the Selectmen to discuss and decide on budget communications tools to be used for the May 2nd, 2023 budget referendum, including explanatory text flyer, budget ballot question format, exit poll, or others, I'm sorry, other to include social media, et cetera. Advisory questions are no longer a charter requirement. The Town Manager is recommending that. An exit poll be held, excuse me, the day of the referendum, a draft exit poll is attached. Volunteers will be needed, and I say "needed", to work the exit poll tables from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We used to have sufficient people that were involved and I'm not sure we still have that. So it would be a stretch, but we still, in order to do that properly, we would need volunteers. Attached here, reference, excuse me again, is a copy of the fiscal year 2022, 2023, explanatory, I'm sorry, explanatory text flyer, which includes the ballot questions. If approved, the explanatory text flyer will require Town Attorney approval and be distributed in the River East News Bulletin as an insert before the referendum. And then there's a proposed resolution to be read.
Okay, I'll read the resolution and then we'll open it up to comment. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen- Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize the ex- explet- explanatory text flyer be prepared and distributed for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget referendum. So hearing that, opening it up for discussion. Tiffany?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a couple of thoughts. So just because advisory questions are no longer, you know, a charter requirement, I I don't know that that means we shouldn't do them. Um, I've had several constituents reach out to me that say they're pretty concerned with some of the probative nature of the exit poll questions. I'd be curious to know if that's something we've done in the past or and if it's been run by the Secretary of the State's Office. I mean, I think that's something we should discuss. My personal view is that these questions about are the, is the budget too high, too low for each of those areas, that those should be on the ballot. I think that there's a psychological response to seeing something on a ballot. I think it gives people an opportunity to fill everything out at once. And then we don't have to worry about finding volunteers from six AM to eight PM to collect another piece of paper from people who are now making a second stop on their way out of the referendum. So I guess I'm just curious why we wouldn't put these questions on the ballot in some form and just make it easier for people uh, to provide us that feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Andy, is there a legal reason why we don't or can't?
I'll check with the town attorney. We always did it because it was part of the charter and then the last charter revision for um, certain reasons, uh, decided to have that removed. But I I I'm not sure whether we can, I think we can just add them like Tiffany's request, but I'll check with the town attorney and get back to you guys.
Okay. I do know that I've questioned the way the where the budget i- is presented on the ballot. Because what my big, my big question has always been, if RAM's budget, whether it be the CIP or the um, uh, operating budget does not get approved, what ends up happening? Because in the town of Hebron budget, I believe the entire uh, dollar amount of everything is is in that, that uh, line. And I've, you know, as I say, if that, if something doesn't get passed, how does that affect that? And you know, we, we, the Board of Finance just does whatever is necessary for that, but um, and is that an accurate statement, Andy?
It is, but what we do is, once the budget gets finally passed, we make it up when we set them. They've set the mill rate. You can, you can accommodate for that.
Yeah, but you know, I just, you know, I just look at the way that whole question is, and it's like, yeah.
That's one of the niches of, you know, without casting any doubt or positive or negative. That's one of the issues with a, with a regional high school, um, in in a three-town vote, we could, Hebron could, as you well know, can vote it down, and the other two towns that aren't seeing the increase that we're seeing could put, pass it through. So if our budget went down and the other two towns pushed it through, that's what you're stating, that number would stay in our budget. But then when it comes to the Board of Finance, hopefully we can get a budget passed when setting the mill rate, it can adjust for that.
Well, if it could be added on, I I, I don't, I I don't have a problem. Anybody else? Peter, Mark?
I I think it's a good idea.
I don't have any issues with it. And we construct, we struggle with communication. If there's an efficient way to get more information, we should be entertaining that.
It's actually a, a pretty good, it's actually a pretty good suggestion, Mr. Chairman, because as you can see, I don't know if it showed, I struggled with uh, getting volunteers, but we'll run it by the town attorney and we'll see what's appropriate and we'll get that right back out to you.
Perfect. Oh, that's great. And then is is there gonna be a well, when, when the Board of Finance makes their presentation, is there gonna be an explanation as to some of the budget drivers or or the budget drivers that are, that are pushing the dollars and cents this year?
So yes, in their public hearing, they're gonna have a PowerPoint and it it should spell out exactly that. Where it started, what they've done, what the drivers are, um, the percentages for both towns, schools, RAM. Um, and then what it's gonna affect, how it's gonna affect the taxpayers. And so we'll have a, we'll have a PowerPoint.
Okay. Beautiful. Anything else on this? Hearing the resolution, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Somehow, okay, okay, yep, no need for discussion. I'm like, wait a minute, I see a lot of lines. Um, so the fair housing month. Wow. Proclamation. Been a long week. I apologize. April is Fair Housing Month. And as a recipient of small cities, the C- CDBG funding, the town of Hebron has an ongoing obligation to support fair housing and equal opportunity, which I think we do anyways. Um, it is a state of Connecticut Department of Housing program requirement that Hebron actively evidences its commitment. The attached resolution should be adopted to reaffirm the town's commitment to fair housing. Whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice and whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, fam- fam- family or family, excuse me, on that one, status or national origin be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and ownership opportunities. And be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location and whereas Connecticut fair housing laws require that all individuals regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, family status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation or gender identity or expression, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location and whereas the town of Hebron is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative uh, statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of here, uh, Hebron hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing and enjoy all of their, all other housing-related services of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law and be it further resolved that the Chief Executive Officer of the Town of Hebron or his or her designated representative uh, is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of Hebron and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, uh, CHRO or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center Legal Services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities. And that is adopted by the Town of Hebron on Thursday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Hearing the resolution, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay.
Doors open, bud.
Our next is our draft agenda for the A- April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Um, and again, looking it over, uh, just wanted to check under old business. Okay, the Public Works Survey is on here. Okay. Um, so if you have anything to add or or what have you, uh, again, get it into the into the town hall so that it can get appropriately added as necessary. Moving right along, um, we have our consent agenda. Uh, and the board of, th- these are, uh, moved that the Board of Selectmen approved the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And before I go through it, does anybody want to pull out any of the minutes or or, uh? Okay, so I'll read them all then. Uh, the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen Board of Finance Budget Meeting, the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen Board of Finance Budget Meeting, the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, the March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen Board of Finance Budget Meeting. Uh, and then we have the approval of the tax refunds as listed. Um, so hearing the, the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, Mark? You put yourself on mute. Mark, you put yourself back on mute.
How about now?
Good.
Mark Rivera, aye.
Thank you. Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Moving along, we would have our liaison reports and I'll go across again, Mark.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, uh, Tiffany?
Couple of quick things, if I might, Mr. Chair. Um, so we heard from the uh, Green Committee this evening regarding the swap shack. Just a couple of dates to keep in mind. So April twenty-second is the Earth Day cleanup in Town Hall Pollinator Garden Planting. Um, the swap shack will reopen on April twenty-third and April twenty-ninth will be the shred event, which was rescheduled um, due to the storm we had last November. Um, another thing they wanted to note is that the signage at the transfer station has gone through the finance department and should be in production next week. Um, in terms of open space, obviously, I know um, Andy's mentioned this, but it's a pretty significant, you know, award for the Open Space Commission to receive the Joshua's Trust Group Conservationist of the Year Award. Um, so that's a pretty significant acknowledgement. Um, their Maple Fest booth was highly attended. Um, and also at the meeting last night, it was discussed that the recent cut will adversely impact two in process land acquisitions, including an acquisition from St. Peters. And so they wanted to share that feedback with the board. And that's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think when the Parks and Rec Commission that last meeting, I was unable to attend due to a conflict with one of our budget meetings. Uh, on the Board of Finance, obviously, uh, just a comment, obviously, you know, they've been in the the throes of the budget uh, discussions as we have, and I just wanted to comment on their last meeting that I thought, uh, there was a great deal of thoughtfulness that was associated with their discussion, clearly not an easy uh, task. Um, so trying to figure out how to set reasonable targeted increases, taking into account the needs of the town and the Board of Ed in conjunction with sensitivity to the associated impact of our residents. Uh, and I think, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult and and what gets lost is this is uh, a reduction i- of an increase. Uh, it's not a cut in the budget, it's reducing the increase and and it's not an easy task that that they have ahead of them and um, they, I thought did a really nice job. And um, and still we don't know, based on the summary earlier, if the significant overall increase um, will be supported. So definitely a challenge. And since we are fortunate to have our, the uh, uh, the Chair of that Board of Finance, Diane, uh, I don't know if you're listening to me ramble on, but if, if you are, and is there anything you wish to add, uh, I welcome that uh, as as part of my liaison report.
Uh, Diane?
Think she was just overwhelmed with my uh, report? Okay, well, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure if she wanted to comment since, you know, I've seen her on the, for the entire time. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Is she? Diane, did you want to say anything or? Guess not. Okay, and I don't have anything at this time. So, oh.
Yeah, yes, you can. You can do it.
Either when they do that. Who hit the button? Okay, uh, our next section would be public comment. Are we doing an executive session tonight? No.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, with Yale not here, we haven't been able to move forward on that item, but I would suggest that we need to have a conversation about how to move that forward because, you know, we're a little bit delayed on it.
Yes.
We need to set, yeah, I think that, I think Tiffany, you're right, we have to have a deadline. It's just a listen, either way, we have to address this by a certain date, um, even though obviously we'd like Yale to be part of it, so.
Yeah, we just have to move forward at a certain point.
And I think. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, yes, I did have a, I did have a conversation with Selectmen Richmond today. She was hoping to attend. She was hopefully getting her, one of her casts either off or reduced. Um, and she, she does recognize that they're behind, so I think she wants to participate, but I just wanted to let you know there was a conversation uh, regarding that if we were gonna. So we can add that to the next agenda if that's the pleasure of the board.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
If I could just slip back to my update because Diane has uh,
Yes.
mapped her keyboard and and wants to make a comment, and I welcome that.
Yeah, I see your green microphone.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm on my phone, so everything is, you know, um, that, it gets hidden. Sorry. I, I want to thank you for uh, recognizing um, the meeting the other night and just want to recognize uh, the Board of Selectmen and all of the staff, as well as the rest of the Board of Finance who isn't here right now for all of the work, eh, as well as all of the other boards that serve our towns, the Board of Education and the RAM, RAM. It is a difficult time. It does seem that we all feel, we all have like something different in mind um, for the town and and what the needs are. And at the end of the day, I think the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance really have to walk that, you know, razor wire to try to figure out um, where, you know, what budget will pass. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we wanted to make any cuts at all. And um, we have a wonderful community. I love living here. I've loved living here for decades. And I hope I continue to live here in in decades in the future. And so, uh, just in closing tonight, I hope that we all get all of our friends and constituents within town to go to vote because each of us do represent one vote. And we need to hear from everyone about what they support or if they don't support. And so I'll be looking forward to the public hearing and the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we are back to public comment. And again, the same rules apply. Please type, you know, your name in the chat box. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes or less. And with that, I'll open it up for public comment. We have any public comment?
I don't see any right now.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to say, I want to thank Terry. He and I were the only two that attended the RAM public hearing. We had to really fight our way past all the thongs of people. Yeah. He sat there and looked at each other like, this is it. I remember that auditorium used to be full. So I don't know what that means, but you know. So I thank him for showing up. It was, it was great. Yeah. Yes, Andy.
So the one thing I will say, due to the increase in the mill rate, Chairman of the Board of Finance, Del Russo had asked that we put a slide together that shows the increase of the population in the levy, how many mills that's worth. And I think that's very important for the people going into vote that that's kind of out of our control. So we're going to put a slide together that shows what every entity, the three entities, the town, Hebron, Hebron Schools, along with RAM, what increases those are to the mill rate. So we, I think we've done a good job and we just want to show what that is and what we have control over and what we don't. So I just want to make that clear for everybody.
Okay. And, and as I say, what, one of my reasons for my earlier comment is that, you know, first off, on the education side of the fence, like always, the, the state has got more unfunded mandates that they have to be responsible for. On the town side of the fence, again, the, the state has pushed new laws, new requirements that we have to as a community fund. You know, we, we don't have options. You know, and then some of our other big drivers, you know, talking, you know, with, you know, concerning like the fire department. The young people moving into town are not volunteering. And yet the safety of our constituency has to be has to be foremost, you know, we have a responsibility. And so as a result, without volunteers, there's no other way of making it up. So there's that. There was going back, I don't know if we need to do a correction or not. Ms. Rhodes had said something about the fair housing resolution. And it was according to this, adopted tonight, April 6th. So I don't know if, did I accidentally say May 6th?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
We know what you meant. Yeah, she did say May.
I apologize. That was to be April 6th. So I don't know what we have to do to make that correction or if it's whatever. I thought I was doing a good job reading. I'm going to have to go back.
The document's correct, right? The document's correct. So I think.
But just me not.
And if Tiffany were giving you a grade, maybe Tiffany like a 92, 93?
Yes.
Now that she brought that up and it's in the record, you can do a friendly amendment and vote on that to make it right because that's an important thing. If it's approved, you should probably amend that and, and, and vote again.
Okay, so making the friendly amendment of the date to be April 6th, 2023. All in favor? I'll go, go the other way. Pete?
Peter Casper, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Happy Easter. Passover.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. It's supposed to be a nice weekend. So hopefully a little cool, but that's okay. We can live with it.
In deference to Gayle, I make a motion.
Safe and wonderful day tomorrow and happy safe holiday. And thank you.